Okay, councilor, I'm going to call to one of the regular council meetings for April 12th. April 12th today. And we have a public hearing first. I have an opening statement to be read. And the public hearing is being convened pursuant to section 464 of the Local Government Act. At this public hearing, the public will be allowed to make representations to council, and all persons present who believe their interests are affected by the proposed bylaw shall be given the opportunity to address council or to pretend written submission affecting matters contained in the proposed bylaw. Those of you who wish to speak concerning this proposed bylaw should commence your address to council by clearly stating your name and address, and then you may give us the benefit of your views concerning the proposed bylaw. And this is zoning amendment bylaw 2071 at 317 Taylor Street for Rose Robinson. And there was a sign up sheet at the door, and nobody has signed it. So I'm going to go ahead and call from the public. I'll call first time for anybody that wishes to speak. I'll call the second time for anybody who wishes to speak. And I will call a third time for anybody who wishes to speak. And with that, I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing. Council English, Council Salt, all in favor? Carries? Now I'm looking for zoning amendment bylaw reading.
I agree with that. That zoning amendment bylaw number 2071 be read a third time.
Secondary motion, Council Salt, any discussion on that? All right, question, all in favor? Carries? All right, we'll move right into our council meeting. Announcements from the mayor. I just want to send out a special thank you to our city grounds crew for getting the city looking pretty for early spring, because it's definitely early spring for Revelstoke. And to let everybody that the new street cleaner that we bought a couple of years ago is busy out there in the community trying to keep the dust down. And councillor Orlando attended Predator and Crane Conference up at RMR last week, and that was put on by the Columbia Mountain Institute for Research. And no scientists there, so it was our way of South Africa. It was a really, really good turnout, too. It was a real coup to have that conference in Revelstoke. I hope to see more of them. This week is Volunteer Week in Canada, and a thank you to all the individuals and citizens that sit on clubs and organizations that add to the economy and the wellbeing and the resiliency of the community of Revelstoke. I just wanted to say condolences to the communities that have lost workers, that didn't go home from work. One being an RCMP member from the island, Sarah Beckett, had two small children. And the other, an arborist for the city of Vancouver, who had a child left behind as well, Jodie Taylor. And the memorial for workers of Canada is coming up later on this month. So with that, I'm looking for an adoption of the agenda. Any additions? Council English, secondary, councillor Duke, all in favor? Thank you, carried. Adoption of the minutes from March 22nd, a regular council meeting. Councillor Orlando, Councillor Salt, all in favor? Carries? Special council meetings minutes from April 3rd. Councillor English, Councillor Salt, all in favor? Carries? Business arising from March 22nd, regular council meeting. Business arising from the special council meeting of April the 3rd. With that, we'll move right into our delegation. May the channel, our Revelstoke beauties, welcome, May. Good morning.
Great, so it's like to thank everyone for having me here today. I'm going to give you a brief update of what's happening with the local youth initiative. Can I have a closer look? Oh, sorry. Looks like it worked, okay. So today, I'm just going to give you a bit of background on the community-directed youth fund and the work we've been doing over the past four years. Take a look at the new CBT youth funding and highlight, look at highlights from the past year, 2015, 2016, and then talk a little bit about priorities as we move forward. So you'll see throughout the slide presentation, there's pictures from this past year of youth. These are youth that went to We Day. Lower picture in the above, there's students at Revelstoke Secondary School with Rob Nash, who came last year to present. And he's a really inspirational speaker, I'll talk about it a little bit more later. Moving right along, looking at, can everyone see that? It's a little bit light, sorry. I don't appreciate the light, is that? No, sorry. A little bit, okay. So as you may know, the Youth Initiative Committee was formed back in 2010. Community Youth Assessment and the Action Plan was created in 2011 and later updated in 2014. Community-directed youth funds were obtained with Columbia Basin Trust in 2012, which was $25,000 over the past four years. Youth liaison position was created in 2012. Youth Advisory Committee, which is a community council, was formed in 2013. In more recent time, in 2014, we launched the Youth Access Fund, which I'll speak about later. And we also became part of the Child Youth Mental Health Consultants Youth Collaborative in 2015. So just to give you a bit of a visual here on my role as youth liaison and the connection with this city. The Columbia Basin Trust gave us this money four years ago, and the city has held this money. Youth Advisory Committee and Alan Mason oversee my position in youth funds. And so you can see the different components of my work here with youth, with the community. I sit on various committees. The Child Youth Mental Health Consultants Youth work that we're doing. Youth Access Fund, which I'll talk about later. The Stoke Youth Network, and of course, a very strong connection with the school district, in which I maintain office hours at Revelstoke Secondary School. The larger Youth Initiative Committee, why I see is it's all encompassing all of these different classes of our community. We meet annually to look at priorities and met this past, at the end of January this past year, to look at priorities and report, and then pass success and that sort of thing. So just a bit of a visual here. So looking at community progress over the last four years. Since we first received community-directed youth funds, we've seen an increase in engagement and collaboration amongst service providers, amongst youth, we've seen the increased communication and information sharing again amongst service providers and youth. Connecting youth with local opportunities and services that already exist in the community. Also increasing youth-friendly events, programming, and leadership opportunities. We've seen the increase in funding directed specifically towards youth programming that various groups in our community have access. And also support for youth-driven projects and ideas. So just to talk a little bit about the Columbia Basin Trust. So as I said before, we received $100,000 for the first four years to implement, to do this work. The Columbia Basin Trust has recently formed the New Basin Youth Network. And they've largely, this new network largely models what we're doing here in Revelstoke and speaks to the success of what we've been doing. Essentially, what it means to us locally is we'll have an increase in funding to continue this work. And so we're looking at, instead of having $25,000 a year, we'll have about $55,000 a year, which is really significant and exciting for our community. And we'll have that over the next three years. So we're just putting together work plans and priorities and we'll be the youth advisory committee now. So that's really exciting news, and you'll probably hear more about that in the coming years, or coming, you know, coming time, I guess. So looking at some highlights from this past year, and areas of focus that I've focused on in 2015, 2016 have been recreation, youth access, mental health and wellness, youth leadership, philanthropy, professional development opportunities, both for parents, teachers, and service providers, and also making sure that our community remains an inclusive community. So as we look at recreation and accessibility, in 2014, we established the Youth Access Fund. So we've had this fund now, this locally managed fund, for the last year and a half. We've helped support and directly connected District 35 youth using the Youth Access Fund for the last year and a half. So this is enabling youth from low-income, modest income families to connect and participate towards recreation arts and cultural programming. Also connecting with groups like Jump Start, or Jump Start and programs like Kidsport that also connect youth with recreational opportunities and remove financial barriers. So we're not only supporting youth, but we're supporting small clubs, you know, like in different organizations, the Karate Club or the Judo Club, to make sure youth are filling their spaces and programs. And we're also working with organizations like, businesses like the RMR, who have been super supportive in offering free tickets and passes and stuff for kids from low-income families, as well as forming art center partnering with them to make sure kids are in their programs, able to see, kind of Shane Coy's influence here. Coy last year, that many youth want to see. But tickets, of course, were $30, and we're going to support some youth that wanted to go. And so there's all kinds of examples, but to me, this is really important. There's lots happening in our community. We live in a great place, and there are tons of opportunities for young people in our community, but a lot of them just don't, there's barriers to access, you know, transportation equipment, or financial needs. So I'm really proud of this particular project, and we'll see a continued, we've got many partners on board, so we have a couple of local schools, Community Connections, FCFD, Child Support, Source and Referral. We've expanded this program to include youth 6 to 19. So that's that. Other examples, where we partnered with different organizations. Last year, we ran a parkour camp, partnership with Grand Stalkers. And then this past spring break, we offered a bunch of different community-based events, including the Second Parkour Camp that the city ran. And so it's great, we're working to see a increase in programming for youth in our community. When we look at youth mental health and wellness, this is something we've been working on over the last three or four years as well, and we've seen the increase in collaboration. We're working on our fourth annual Youth Wellness Fair that'll be happening during Mental Health Week in May. Bringing in speakers and school presentations, workshops, and professional development opportunities for teachers, for service providers, parents. And then most recently, this past year, we became part of a Child Youth Mental Health Consultants Youth Collaborative, which is a provincial initiative. And so we were able to access additional funding through this collaborative and have hired a project lead who's been doing additional work. So this is really, really great. So here's some more photos. This is the Rob Nash presentation I mentioned last year. Rob Nash is a, he's an old-time rock and roller who came in and put on quite a performance and really connected with the kids, and spoke about issues, everything from suicide to bullying to just general mental health and coping. And so the kids still talk about this presentation, something we, I think our committee spent, it took us three years, but by the time we first started talking, I'll bring him here until the time he was actually here. And so it's really great to see some of these things happening in our community and kids in the schools benefiting from hearing, from having presentations like this. So that's just one example. Again, pictures from the Annual Wellness Fair, in which we have different service providers and businesses coming in to talk to youth about a variety of different topics and different booths set up, and set up at high school, interactive activities. So we're again planning for that. Looking at youth leadership and philanthropy. You may have heard of the We and We Day. We've been taking kids over the past three years to Vancouver to participate in We Day with the idea that the youth earn their spot on these trips and do philanthropy work and charity work, and raise awareness of different causes that they're passionate about. So this has been really fun, and lots of youth are excited about giving back to their community and, you know, and creating, and this has created more leadership opportunities for our local youth. And there's a We Club at every school that's involved in various activities throughout the year. The Stoke Youth Network continues to recognize youth in our community, partnering with local media. We partnered with Stoke FM last year to do a media project, and we've partnered with other groups as well. And so this past year, we launched the Youth of the Stoke Youth of the Month, so recognizing the youth that have their outstanding community involvement, youth spirit, and leadership each month, so that's been great. So looking forward, looking at some of the top priorities moving forward. These are kind of based on information collected out of the Youth Action Plan, the Integrated Community Sustainability Plan, the recent Youth Initiative Community Meeting, and most importantly, from youth, input from youth themselves. So in the Youth Action Plan, there's four different pillars. So the first pillar is entertainment, recreation, and culture. And so prior, top priorities in this area are youth-friendly community events, infrastructure, programming, and activities. And so when you talk about youth-friendly events, I, picture of their poster of the Coffee House there, I think that's a great example of a youth-inclusive, a youth-friendly, family-friendly event that youth get to perform and use, and whatnot, so that's a great example of a community-inclusive. And then at the top there, you'll see it's a picture of a skate park. I recently visited Pemberton, so they've got a really neat kind of youth space and skate park. And I know Laura DiNato has been working hard in the Columbia Valley Skateboard Association to see that happen, and I appreciate the support of the council. And the youth certainly appreciate the city's support in establishing a new skateboard park here in Revelstoke. So we're hopeful that funding will come through for that. And also, second priority, removing barriers for participation in recreation arts and cultural activities, that continues to be a priority. Providing leadership and outdoor education opportunities for youth as well. When we look at home health and safety, our second pillar. Priorities include youth mental health, available caring adults, parent engagement and support, risk management. And then again, dedicated youth space, so a few photos of Pemberton youth space. And that's something that we'll continue to talk about in our community, making sure that youth have safe spaces to hang out. Our third pillar, citizenship connectivity engagement. The priorities in this area include anti-hate and inclusion initiatives. I've been a part of the Safe Spaces Society for the last year and a bit. We've been doing lots of work in this area around ensuring that our community is an inclusive, safe space, and our schools as well. We have a workshop coming up in June about creative spaces. We're bringing in a group called Out with Schools and Call Out from Vancouver to do work in all four schools as well. Providing a parent community workshop and a service provider workshop on looking at how we can create safe spaces in our schools. And this is really important, we have youth that have come out. We have two, right now, youth that identify as transgender. And I'd say, two or three years ago, they would never have come or started. We've made great strides in this area, and I'll continue to be involved in that group because it's an important youth issue. So anyway, mentorship continues to be a priority. Community Connections taking the lead on this, they're doing a great job with their peer mentoring and school mentoring programs. Youth-driven, supporting youth-driven projects and ideas. Youth awareness, communication, how do we make sure that youth know what's happening? And then finally, youth leadership and philanthropy, which I spoke about earlier. So education, the final pillar is education, employment, and training. There's some photo of some of our staff at RSU. Greg, Penny, and Piper, and Jodie, and Aaron, they're the school councillors. So the pillar, or the priorities here in this pillar talk about soft skill development, experiential learning opportunities, post-secondary transition, entrepreneurship, and technology skill development. And at the end of the day, when we, you know, people ask me, well, what do youth want? This is what I've come up with. So they want caring adults to listen and take an interest in them. They want space to make their own decision. They want safe places to hang out and have fun. They want to spend the time with their friends and family. Whenever I ask what's important to you, family, friends always comes up. And I think that's, we've struggled around supporting parents and families too in our community, it's really important to feel included and also to give back and to contribute to their community. So youth want to work, they want to volunteer, and they want to give back to the community as well. So that's all I'd say. I'd like to thank Alan Mason for his ongoing support. And I'd like to thank Aaron Orlando, who has sat on his advisory committee with the Nixon prior to that. So I'd like to thank you both, and Alan, and also just the entire committee in our community for supporting youth in our community and the Youth Initiative. Anyone have any questions? Happy to answer them, or?
So, May, and I just have one comment. I remember you first coming to council, and you were talking about, everybody was giving you ideas on what to do with youth and stuff. And you really stuck to your guns, that it was youth-driven ideas and what the youth wanted to see happen. So I really applaud you for that.
Oh, thank you, thanks, Linda. Yeah, I think it's really important to step. But it's, us adults have lots of ideas, and what my difficulty is, but it's really important, yeah, we support youth-driven.
Councillors, any questions or comments? Councillor Orlando?
Yes, question, comment? I know in our last meeting, we talked about the new funding opportunities, which you touched on here. What was the feedback when they talked about this funding? What kind of things were we doing right in their eyes to see the?
Yeah. I think they really liked how we were collaborating, they really liked the partnership we had with the city. Also, our community's unique in that I'm actually housed in the high school. Not, other communities don't have that strong tie with high school. But they really appreciated that we worked so closely with the city. The city held this funding and really showed commitment from our community. So they liked that, and just the collaboration that we're doing, really doing broad range youth engagement here. We're not just running a small program for a small group of youth or just a drop-in after-school program twice a week. So they really liked that, and they see that we've built capacity. And then we're, we're using this money to then increase funding, you know, and match and build, hopefully, versus just kind of dumping it into one program. So they really want the other communities do what we're doing. Rossin's also doing a great job with their community, or they've done a great job with the community-directed youth funds. So, yeah, probably just the collaboration, working, and also just the broad range. So I'm not just working with a small group of youth, we're targeting all youth, 12 to 19.
Certainly great news here.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Any more questions or comments? Just, well, thank you very, very much. Keep up the good work. Proud to know you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thanks, May.
Okay, councillor, if I move on to Old Business, 8A. Let's bring that forward.
I'll bring that forward.
Okay, that's councillor English.
I'll move that to Big Eddie Local Area Service Bylaw 2094, be adopted.
Secondary, Councillor English. Any discussion? All in favor? And 8D?
I'll bring that forward as well. At the Big Eddie Water Utility Services, one operation, authorization by law 2095, be adopted.
Secondary, councillor English. Any discussion? Just to let the public know, that's to authorize the city to oil the money for the Big Eddie Water Project. So if you move along, and I'll call the question, all in favor? Carried. On to New Business, 9E. Councillor Orlando?
I'll bring that forward, Your Worship. 9A, I move that the fees and charges Amendment Bylaw Number 2107 be read in the first, second, and third line.
Secondary for that one, councillor English. Any questions, comments, discussion? All in favor? Carries? The next one is the Development Services?
I'll bring forward 9D. The Development Variance Permit Application Number DVP 2016-05, be approved.
Secondary for that one, councillor English. And a presentation on this one?
You worship, very briefly, it's a signed variance application for the museum on First Street. The application is to install a kiosk. The question that came up when the application was introduced is what were the colors that were proposed? The colors are proposed to be olive and burgundy that matches the rest of the kiosks that are around the downtown. It's to be located on front, adjacent to the stairs at the front of the entrance, and would advertise events or special exhibits that are taking place at the museum. No additional input was received on this application. Thank you, Mr. English.
Councillors, any questions, comments?
Your worship, just one point of clarification. Although the agenda and the report says to approve the application, the application was approved at the previous meeting?
What's received?
Oh, it was only received, and approved the application.
Referring to you guys at previous meeting?
We're bringing it forward, right?
So the recommendation and the motion should be to approve the development variance permit, not the application?
Oh, the permit. We need loaded.
If that's okay with you.
Is that okay with the first and the second? Okay. Any more comments? Thank you, Mr. Warhouse, for being here.
Thank you very much.
I'll call the question, all in favor?
All right, I'll bring forward 9C. The province would request that include the following conditions. Proposed sand and gravel extraction and erosion site permit is approved as soon as needed.
Secondary for that one, councillor English. Any discussion on that motion, councillors?
Yeah, this is notes that came forward from the Environmental Committee, when it was brought forward and they raised these issues, concerns, suggestions. So that's where they're on the agenda right now.
They're all those suggestions.
Your worship, one additional item that we are asking to add, a recommendation, is that the wellhead protection plan for the Gulf Course well, which was completed in 2007, also before and along with our council's resolution for the ministry's information.
So we would just add that to the resolution?
Yes, sure. Should it be item 1A?
Okay, let's, please, hold this. Councillors, I'm going to call a question, all in favor? Councillor, can I just ask one question of Mr. Stracken? What's the next step in this?
So this first resolution is reverbs to the permit that started last year. They needed a development permit as part of that process that came to council. Council granted them the development permit. And the ministry went off and did their process, which has taken until now to complete. So now they have all their plans in place. And the items that we listed off for council to consider forwarding to the ministry are items that they didn't address as part of their process. So we're asking to remind them of those particular items, which included the issue of the crystallized cell cut, as well as the noise and the hours, which aren't restricted further in their master plan. Council does not have the authority to block or issue the permit, it's with the ministry, but they've been referred to council for comments, that's what they wish to see. The additional items of the noxious weeds control plan and the air quality monitor for Columbia Park came forward from the Environmental Advisory Committee. The final items, brought forward is a report which has not been included in the ROCP, which is the wellhead protection plan for the Gulf Course well. This location on this side of the river falls within that area. This entire area, including the landfills extending north, all flows into the water source for that well. So we wanted to get a copy of that before the Ministry's Board of Review.
Any more questions?
Can I just follow up on that? Is it necessary for the province to address this? I mean, will they get back to us and say, "A" or "N"? Or do we just find out what their ruling is, or how does it work?
It's not a requirement for them to refer to municipalities, and in the past, they didn't. A lot of pressure from communities, particularly where gravel pits, you've seen that taking place at Shellag right now. There's concerns, and they're responding to those concerns by starting to refer them to the city. If they have questions, they'll get back to us. If they don't, they'll proceed with their process. And I'll either issue the permit or deny the permit. And part of that permit may include these additional items that council's requested, it may not. You will likely receive a copy of the permit, and you may bring that back to council if there's any items of significance.
Thank you. Orlando?
Your worship, a question for Mr. Stracken regarding items C1, A through E. Inside the report, there were a number of recommendations that came through the Environmental Advisory Committee, some of which are included here in these five points, but others are not. And I was just seeking to understand why these particular conditions were included and others weren't. Like they were talking about not removing the topsoil from the site, and how to go in and refresh on some of the other ones. Not removing the topsoil from the site, where the water will come from to be through for dust control, that kind of thing.
Your worship, the item that the topsoil is addressed to the remediation plan, there's stockpiling outside of the terrain, so we can bring forward that as a resolution, because it's addressed in the plan. The water sourcing, we really couldn't figure out how that would work for a referral response in ministry. I'll look forward to our engineering staff to review what's being used for the water source, but it's not something that would be associated with the mine permit.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call a question, all in favor?
I'll move 9C2, the staff requested to review the use...
Excuse me, your worship, is there a second resolution?
Yeah, there is a second now.
Sorry.
The staff requested to review the use with rural residential 60 hectare district, RR60, the potential removal of sand and gravel extraction and processing as an allowable use in the development of a new zoning district specifically for this use that could be applied to those lands designated for sand and gravel extraction in the official community plan.
Secondary for that motion, Counselor Salt. And Mr. Strachan, so that's just looking at the RR60 lands and seeing if we can narrow it down to what is used and what is not for drawing.
So, your worship, so the RR60 is a zoning district, allows for gravel extraction and processing as an allowable use, and we have RR60 all over the community. So it was identified last year when this application came through for development permit, and it's quite broad sweeping. The official community plan identifies a series of areas for that designated land use, but the zoning bylaw doesn't match it. So this review, or the council supports this resolution, would have staff go away and look at the OCP areas, talk to the ministry as well as the user groups, and two parts of that, see what restrictions we need to bring in place for protection of the community, but also ensure that there's adequate resource for continuation of construction in the community, as well as transcanal, I have other projects that are going on. So we'll be looking to the ministry for some guidance on inventory and what's required, not just now, but moving forward, at least the next five years, prior to a superior view of second that, and look to see if these areas are adequate to meet that demand, and whether the existing pits have the capacity to meet the demand for that period of time. The end result of the process may be an amendment to the OCP to expand or reduce the amount of land that's designated for this type of use, as well as what zoning should be attached to. We feel it's really quite important to first talk to the ministry, as well as the extraction companies in town, to see where we really have, my evidence of a true inventory. And the ministry, as part of the mandate, doesn't do that inventory work unless it's requested by the municipality. They look at each application as an independent application, and not in relation to the volumes of extraction rates that have already been granted. So there's no running tally that says, "Okay, this community needs this many thousands of cubic meters of gravel available annually." Now they have that, so they'll stop, and they'll just continue to process as applications arrive.
Good idea. Any comments or questions on that? Any comments, Counselor Landau?
Your worship, just comments and maybe a question for yourself. I believe it was also a recommendation of the previous council two terms ago, that when we looked at zoning in our OCP, zoning bylaws, that this type of discussion take place as well. So where is the corporate and not an inventory?
Mr. Strachan?
Your worship, the previous council did request that a process could take place. It was incorporated into the official community plan, but the next step wasn't taken to bring it into the zoning bylaw. So the zoning bylaw is still an 80 document, 2009 OCP has it. So there is areas that are designated for ground, side of ground extraction, but the zoning bylaws don't reflect that. And now this will bring us forward to get the zoning bylaw aligned with the OCP, but also ensure that since 2009, we haven't essentially reed our inventory or reeded the center of value or... Okay, thank you.
Any more questions, all in favor?
I will move forward 9D. That the province be requested to include the following conditions in the application from the Revelstoke Cycling Association for a new recreational trail at Mount Carche is approved. List as seen in the agenda.
Secondary for that, Counselor Landau. Discussion on this one, Counselor?
Thank you, your worship. A lot of these also came through the environmental committee. There is a lot of discussion around this, and if you've read the report, you can see early in the agenda, and what came of that meeting, and they're also good suggestions.
Mr. Strachan, any comments on this one?
Very briefly, your worship, the first item, the water protection, is being looked at by a hydrologist from the Camels, is coming in, I believe they were here last Thursday to look at this particular item. There's a number of property owners that are on, outside of the city, that are in the regional district, that have their water sources that come from this area, and there's concern about the impact of the trail construction, all those trail users. They are surface water sources, that's where the concern comes to place, animals, or dogs, domestic animals, or people getting into these water source areas. The hydrologist is kind of on Thursday, we haven't seen the results of that. However, we did ask for copies of...
So is that in our direction, or in the regional district direction?
It's within the city's property, it's within the city's lands, so it's within the city's property. It's provincial crown land, however, it's within the city's jurisdiction. So we've asked through this resolution, council would be asking the ministry to take that into consideration as part of the approval process, which appears to be happening right now. We're looking at what the hydrologist says about these water sources, and the impacts of the trail. So they're essentially doing what council was asking in this resolution.
Any questions, comments? Okay, I understand why some homeowners would be concerned about the water. Okay, call the question, all in favor?
So the next three items I'm in conflict of interest because they are due to the vacation rental, which is an industry that we operate.
Next two, please.
Two?
Two.
Two?
Okay.
Your worship, in the light of Council group meeting in the room, I'll bring forward these items. The first one, item E, resuming the application from the single-family residential to the first district, that's address 2297 Airport Way. The application to resume the lot as listed in the agenda package. This is already a vacation rental property, and I just wanted to clarify this.
Secondary for that motion, Counselor English, and you have a short presentation next to go on?
Thank you, your worship. As an order, this is an existing vacation rental that's applying to legalize their operation. They've applied for a four-bedroom vacation rental and have demonstrated their parking is adequate to meet the bylaw requirements. As you've seen here, as well as the photos, it's quite a large property, quite a large home. However, its impact will be known through public hearing and hear from the neighbors as to any concerns they may have with the vacation rental's operation, since it is an existing operation. Thank you.
Okay, so the first part of that, I'll call the question out, and third one, discussion, please. Another common question, all in favor? Carrie, so there's a second part to that?
I'll move that zoning amendment by law number 2105, you read it first and second time, and staff to direct the schedule of the public hearing.
May secondary, Counselor English, any discussion on that? More questions, all in favor? Carry. And the next one.
And that, again, this is a single family residential property, wanting to be changed to vacation rental. It is resuming the application, that this is 1904, and you wrote, "The application to resume the lot again from residential to vacation rental."
Secondary on that one, Counselor English. Mr. Strachan, do we have a short presentation on this one?
Your worship, again, this is another existing vacation rental, wishing to legalize the process, so they've applied to sanction their existing operation. It is a four-bedroom vacation rental located on Hay Road. Again, this is a vacation rental exists, so through the public hearing process, the adjacent neighbors will receive letters, so all the neighbors who have any interest in the property will receive one by mail or by hand delivery. They'll have your opportunity to provide input and their thoughts to council on public hearing. Thank you, your worship.
Counselors, any questions, discussion? Call the question, all in favor? And the second, carry.
That, this zoning amendment by law number 2106, we read it first and second time, and staff to direct the schedule of the public hearing.
Secondary, Counselor English. All in favor? And next one, Development Services, that was made, so I think, Counselor Duke, is okay for this one? So Counselor Duke, sign G.
Sign G. The council approved development variance permit application number DVP 2016-04, and you have notice of their intention to consider issuance of development variance permit number DVP 2016-04 for lot 1, plan 12206, to vary the following sections of subdivision development and service by law number 1, 846. Section 1.3B of the Schedule 4 Design Standard to allow for lower minimum fire flows from 2 to 5 liters per second to 67 liters per second for the industrial property.
Secondary for that motion, Counselor Salt. Presentation, Mr. Strachan?
Thank you, your worship. So the property owner was applying to constructing an industrial building on the subject property. Through that process, it was identified that there is not adequate fire flow to this property to allow for that construction to proceed. They then engaged Brian Green from the Pacquelin Consulting Services and Engineer to review the site and find a way to meet the fire regulations through other means. In this case, they used separations as well as sprinkler as a means to meet that standard of the fire flows being addressed. So the engineer provided a letter, a stamp concealed letter, explaining how that process would work during construction, and as part of the building permit, they will be signed on as a professional to ensure that it's installed according to the requirements and allowing to proceed and have a building permit issued. It is a variance in that it is a change to the subdivision of the development servicing bylaw. However, it's a change that's supported by proper engineering to meet the requirements by different means. However, it's still varies. Thank you, your worship.
Counselors, any discussion on the motion? Counselor Duke?
I'll just say this is exciting that they worked with an engineer and come up with a creative solution to deal with the fire flows currently so that they can continue off their project, so that's good to see.
Absolutely. Any other comments, discussion, Counselors? I'll call the question, all in favor? Carry. Now we move on to economic development. Counselor Brothers?
Just before you start, I sit on the board directors of two organizations that apply funding through them.
What do you think, Mr. Shablon? This is a blanket.
Yeah, that's the difficulty when these things are locked together, is then a counselor declares a conflict and we leave for the whole discussion. Counsel could consider a resolution to approve the funding to all of those listed, absent the items of which counsel sits on, and he could state his conflict and...
Do you have a number? Do you have a number for that?
According to the schedule, I think... I, like, I sit on two of them as well, so I mean...
Mr. Shablon, you have another conflict?
We're not going to this forum, are we? You have to go home early.
Nice try. I think you should stay. I think you should stay, it's for the benefit of the whole community. I don't know, staff?
You really shouldn't vote on funding organizations that you have. More than simple membership, and if you serve as an executive, to any of these, you don't need to check yourself.
Counselor English, you sit on the executive?
On one of them, I do.
Which one is that?
The Coffee House Society.
So Coffee House Society?
Yeah.
And the Skateboard Park for you, Counselor Landau?
Yeah, as I'm the coffee house as well, hopefully a team in meetings. And also I'm 13, Colab Program Support.
Oh, okay, that one I get.
13, I have it clear as well. I'm number 32, I recommend a conflict with real estate and I believe it's about a lot of Canada.
So I've got them. I've got Avalanche Canada, I've got the Coffee House, and I've got the Skateboard Park, and I've got the Colab. So we're going to play musical chairs. So I'm looking for a motion for accepting and approving all of the applications, except for the Skateboard Park, the Colab, Coffee House, and Avalanche Canada. And we'll go from there. I need a first, Counselor Brothers?
I'm making a vote.
Counselor English? Discussion? All in favor? There we go, carries. So Counselor Landau, we're going to start with you, since I'll go open it up.
Forty-five.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the Skateboard Park funds from CBT and the Colab funds from CBT. Counselor English? Counselor Brothers? All in favor? Carries? And then Counselor English, who has Counselor Landau back in? Will you take it?
Well, it's a little hard because I'm in hospice.
Now I'm doing the Coffee House one, to approve the Coffee House. Counselor Brothers, Counselor Landau, all in favor? Carries? And then Counselor Brothers?
You can handle this for hours, well.
No, we did, we did. I got her.
Good, you did.
Chairs. Okay. Way to go, Counsel. Okay, now I'm asking for an approval on Avalanche Canada. Counselor Salt, Counselor Landau, all in favor? Carries? Recovered him. Way to go.
Nice work.
Problems are on the spot.
Yeah.
Try to throw me curveballs, will you?
Well, you handled it well. Not to the other bar.
So we're moving on with economic development H. Oh, no, we got, we've got that. The second part is...
Chair, write a letter, Counselor Brothers? That city council write a letter to the members of the program evaluation committee, thanking them for their work in evaluating the project.
Counselor Landau seconded it. And just, Mr. Mason, who are we thanking? Who's been sitting on there?
Good question. Fraser Blyth, Janet Van Ue, Leonard Chell. Yeah, Bill McFarland, and sports, and one other. Oh, Cindy, Cindy...
Cindy Moore.
Cindy Moore.
Oh, Cindy Moore.
Bye.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Carries. So item I, economic development. Counselor Brothers?
Number one, that city council requests that staff explore the possibility of implementing an energy efficient incentive program to encourage more environmentally friendly construction practices in the community.
Secondary for that one, Counselor Salt. Any discussion on that, Counselors? Counselor Duke?
This one also came from the environmental committee, yes. It was pretty active needing that meeting, but it was from an article, I'm forgetting the community, actually, that had a limit to their standards. I think it's a good idea to look into it.
I think it's a good idea, too. It's done in the East Cooley's and the...
I can't really remember.
Good idea. Okay, Counselors, all in favor? Carries.
Number two, that city council requests Portis VC to make a public presentation with respect to their initiative to convert the community from propane to natural gas.
Secondary for that one, Counselor English? I have a question, my staff, on this. Will this affect their proposal to the Utilities Commissioner at all? If we don't...
Don't believe they've made application yet.
No, they have not, your worship, have not made application yet, and they have done a presentation for the city, or is it a presentation with respect to this conversion?
They did it at council, right?
They did it at the community.
As well?
Because they tell the...
I just don't want us to impact their presentation to the Utilities Commission. I just don't want us to impact their presentation to the Utilities Commission. And that's someone else, Counselor Duke?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm kind of, I'm leaning towards what you're thinking, this came from the Environmental Committee because they were concerned that because the reduction in the cost of propane as a commodity that it needs to be reassessed because are we actually gonna have a benefit switching over to natural gas from a cost perspective? And then also they were looking into propane from digging it out to actually burning it. Is it better in long term for the environment than natural gas? And they wanted more information on that. I don't think bringing Portis back to the community when they already had a presentation is necessarily gonna answer those questions.
So I'm agreeing with Counselor Duke. Any more discussion on this? So I'm gonna call my question. All those in favor of the motion as it stands? All those against? Defeat it. Anybody wanna make a different motion or change? Just asking.
If I can just ask a question, Your Worship, can it be left for staff to look into the questions that Counselor Duke is...
Absolutely. I don't think we need a motion for that. It's for staff, all right. Next, economic development.
Then the community economic development work plans two thousand sixteen will be approved?
Second, there for that? Counselor English? Mr. Mason, I asked for this to be deferred so that you were here. I just had a question about the golf course. When will counsel be hearing? About the golf course they were supposed to do?
I think, as I recall, last month, I was requested to prepare a report that was to be presented in camera. And that has been delayed twice for various reasons. I think it was supposed to be on the end camera agenda today, but it was delayed. So my understanding is it will be at the next council meeting on the end camera agenda.
Okay, good. And the mayor will be that for that then. Thank you. Counselors, all in favor? Carrie. Now we're moving on to item K, finance.
Your Worship, I'll bring that forward.
Just, I do have to declare conflict. I am on one of these boards as well.
And that would be?
The rebels still got your bats, Ford.
Okay. Anybody else got any comments on this one? Okay. So Counselor English, we'll go ahead and step up. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Counselors?
Your Worship, I'll bring forward that the following grants for the two thousand and sixteen year be awarded as listed in the package with the...
Exception.
The exception of the...
Thank you. Second, there for that motion? Counselor Duke? Counselor Sutton, any comments on?
So just bringing forward what was brought to the Finance Committee for the Grant and Feed Program. And Your Worship, that was on the dental chair, and you and staff have gone through with quite diligence and made some appropriate choices, so I encourage this to be performed.
Okay. Counselors, any other questions and comments? All in favor? Carrie, do you know if we can bring our counselor?
We're doing the acrobats.
Yeah, we're doing the acrobats.
We didn't need to delete that item.
Yeah.
Because the counselor question is left.
So we can pop it back in.
Let's pop it back in.
Because he sits on the...
Are you in the second round?
Yeah, I think so. Maybe just put the acrobats back.
So this is for the whole legislature? You can just pop the question in.
I'll call a question one more time? All in favor? All right.
You're gonna mess up four acrobats there.
They're a nice group, but we got messed up. This one, I thought we were doing great. Okay, next finance, finance.
Your Worship, I'll bring this forward. I move that liability in your section one seventy-five of the community charter not in excess of five years. We authorized a client's purchase of life scan equipment at a cost of thirty thousand dollars. Vehicle vehicles at a cost of eighty thousand dollars. A cube bin at a cost of fifty thousand dollars, and a field mower at a cost of thirty thousand dollars with no provisions for...
Second, there on that motion? Counselor Orlando? This is follow-up housekeeping item two, budget approval. Item's already been approved, counsel. Counsel, can we ask if there's any discussion? All in question? All in favor? Carrie's. Okay, now we're moving on to item M, parks and rec. future. Counsel Orlando, do you want to get this motion?
Sure. Item M, I move that the Leansons Lake Community Parking Campground concept plan report dated April fifth, twenty sixteen be endorsed and that the improvements proposed be considered without a capital projects for prioritization during capital ledger process and services.
And second, there on that motion? Counsel Brothers? Presentation is to be done.
Thank you, Your Worship. So I just thought I'd take the opportunity to go through the report and just highlight some of the different things that came up in the report so we all had a better understanding of where we're at. So last November, the city hosted an open house. At that open house, we presented three concept plans as well as building design options for the park. We distributed a comment sheet. Following the open house, we posted all the material on the city's website. Through the comment sheet, community members were asked to vote on a site plan as well as different improved, excuse me, different improvements in the park. The survey results led to the final site plan that you'll see in the presentation. So I'm just gonna start by highlighting the concept plans that were presented at the open house. The first concept plan was a community orientated site plan where the improvements were aimed at reducing the impact of the campground and creating a looking field that was consistent with the community park. So you'll see on the site plan, we removed all the camping along the beach as well as in the grass area there. I hope you can see the little red dot there, right there. We added different community features like an amphitheater, an exercise circuit, fishing dock, fishing cleaning station, and a covered picnic shelter area. The second site plan was more campground orientated where we expanded the campground while still trying to maintain the function of a community park. So you'll see there's yurt camping, additional walk-in tent sites along the beach but off the beach, a campground reception area, as well as the community orientated amenities that I talked about in the previous slide. The third site plan, we tried to create a balanced approach where we combined ideas from the community park concept plan as well as campground concept plan and threw it all into one plan. As you can see, it's pretty busy. There's a lot of amenities on there. The public was asked to look at the three site plans and vote on a preferred site plan. Most of the feedback, the majority of the feedback was for the community orientated site plan. So we took the community feedback along with some discussion we had with staff as well as the Parks and Rec Committee, and we came up with the final site plan where we removed the camping spots from the beach area. And to compensate for that, we added some walk-in tent sites there. We relocated the mini putt course. In the previous concepts, the mini putt was actually removed from the concept plans, but about eighty-five percent of the feedback was we want the mini putt back in. So we put the mini putt back in. We've accommodated an accessible pathway, a covered picnic shelter area, and a permanent day use and campground reception building, as well as a dock extension. Where in the previous plan, the dock extension was actually a separate dock around this area here, which would have been the fishing dock. Some feedback that we got from people that use the lake for fishing is that's not where you fish. You fish over here. So we added a dock extension off of the existing dock to keep those two uses separate so we didn't have people swimming and fishing in the same area. So that's kind of how we got to the final site plan in the report. So the top three improvements, as voted by the public, were improved buildings, accessible pathways, and landscape improvements and succession plantings. So the highest priority for the buildings was replacement of the campground shower and washroom building. The building, the existing building has reached the end of its life cycle. So we need to think about replacing that. This existing facility here will be wheelchair accessible, have a covered cooking shelter and dishwashing area, storage for maintenance equipment, as well as wood storage in the back. Then the consultant provided five different concepts that combine different building options of one-story and two-story buildings for the day use and campground reception building. We've also, from this, re-identified the need for a permanent campground reception building as well as a food kitchen service. Previous caretakers have used semi-permanent trailers for both functions, has a concession and a reception area, and we're finding that we need something more permanent and concrete onsite there. So the consultant has provided options for one or two stories, and the intent would be that the different uses would be housed in that building. So some of that would be campground registration office, kitchen services, campground laundry, outdoor covered dining area, lockable storage area for different rental equipment, paddleboards, canoes, et cetera, and also a caretaker suite if one day we chose to house a caretaker in the facility. The day use washroom can be combined in this building or can be a separate building. So they've accommodated a design for a separate building. The reason why we broke it out of the original concepts was because there's still some life in the existing building that's there right now. So we don't really think that that's a high priority replacement right now. But we don't have a reception building or a kitchen services building, so that is a priority. This building can wait a few more years, or we could do one building. But we can, we'll discuss the building options at a later date. Right now, we're just focusing on the site plan and the uses identified on the site plan. The second improvement was accessible pathways. So right now, there is, the existing pathway is down some stairs with a guardrail and just a gravel path. So the community has identified that a more well-defined path is desirable. That location is just the approximate area. We still have to get some geotechnical assessment done and some engineering studies done to determine whether that path will actually work in that particular spot or not. Landscaping improvements and succession plantings was also identified as a priority. Suggested improvements include a combination of plantings throughout the campground and day use area, formalizing the popular pedestrian thoroughfares through paved and gravel trails, and then public education around the work, the restoration work that we did on the park through signage and just educating the public about the landscaping improvements. So other considerations that were identified in the report but not really voted as high improvements by the public, but still included on the site plan because of their relevance to how the facility has operated in the past. Signage, onsite signage, kind of differentiating the campground use and the day use, and also directional signage along Victoria Road and Airport Way. I think we need to recognize that we need some more signage strategically placed so that visitors can find the park. Campsite improvements, while not identified as a high priority, I think there is a reasonable expectation that the standards of the campground be brought up to a park that's a municipal park in a B.C. resort community. So that has been recognized on the site plan as well. And then dock improvements, addressing the accessibility issues and the extension for the existing dock for fishing. So those are on the site plan, but were not voted on by the community. The last section of the report is the implementation strategy, and this section identifies the proposed improvements, suggests timelines, one through fifteen years, and provides approximate cost estimates. And I just wanna stress that the improvements in the report will be considered during budget deliberation, so we're not making any of those decisions today. There's a lot of information in the report regarding buildings, pathways, plantings, and they're big-ticket budget items. And I think more detailed discussion will happen as we go through the budget process on those items. For today, we're just in, talking about the report in the context of the site plan. And that's our little circle. That would be it.
Thank you, Laurie. Counselors, any questions, comments?
Thank you, Your Worship. Through the chair, just a question there. We have an operating agreement with the individual operating the park. And the new plans, it looks as though you're reducing the sites that can be parked at by RVs. Was there a comment from the operator about that, knowing that your revenue is based on how many RVs can be parked there?
Yes, there was discussion with the caretaker. We've had several meetings with her. In particular, talk about the campground, the loss of camping spots along the beach as well as the RV campgrounds. She didn't express a lot of concern about that because of the quality and the standard that we're trying to bring the campground up to so that there could be some type of equity by asking more, more money for the parking spot if you're bringing it up to another standard. And I think a lot, a lot of improvements around the existing campground washroom and shower building alone might help with that right now, too. We are discussing coin-operated facilities as well, so there's additional revenue generating opportunities there. And we have looked at some numbers on what potential revenue from that facility would look like. I've done that exercise with her as well. So I think she's okay with it for the time being. It's, yeah.
Thanks for the presentation. That was really, really long.
Counselor Orlando?
Yeah, just as a comment, when, I guess, first of all, this project is outlined in a Parks and Rec master plan, so it's been in the works for a few years to do a study and take a look at all the options we have. I'm happy to have seen the comments that the public made. I tried last one to spend as much time as possible down there. So just to see what the whole season looked like, what traffic looks like, what, how people use the park, as well as talk to people about their comments. And I think in the public comments that we had, although they were, they weren't as many as I'd like to see, they did sort of reflect the kind of things that people said to me, so I'm happy with that. It is, you know, overall, the project here, in my mind, is, a lot of it has to do with, you know, aging infrastructure, especially the shower building over there. It's in not, not good shape. It needs to be replaced. So, I mean, to me, that's what I see when I look at this, is we're trying to put together a responsible long-term plan to deal with issues that need to be dealt with and address them in a step-by-step fashion. And really, what we're looking at today is the site plan, is this general concept. This concept, okay, with counsel, they agree with this direction. And subsequent discussions about individual items or budget items or budget discussions that need to be dealt with later on. I know we have asked the, Mr. Nano, to explore a little bit more as those discussions come up, things like the business plan and what the capital costs, capital improvements will be reflected in the business plan with the improvements.
Lots of work still to be done.
Yes.
I like how you've included the accessibility in the plan. I think that's a big push from the provincial government. So there might be some funding opportunity around those components to have families come camping, you know, with a motorhome with a child in a wheelchair that they can take safely down to the water, so get on your boat. Any more comments, questions, I'm going to call a question, all in favor, carried. So I'm going to move on to correspondence here. Um, I have a letter from the Dagan to be made a referral to, second up to staff. Okay. Yeah, I'll pass a motion for that, if that counts, Counsel Sols.
Your worship, I'll bring forward that the letter from the Dagan dated March 17th, 2016, referred to Development Services staff for review.
Seconder on that motion, Council English. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Sols.
Your worship, this is a letter from, um, three of the, uh, people in the area who have hotels, who are concerned about the bylaw, or the who are going to allow another proponent to build a higher, uh, building. Um, and I feel that they felt that they were being locked out. Uh, they have the opportunity to come back to council as well. They have concerns about their building or building up. Um, and we appreciate the fact that they wrote the letter and brought it forward.
Any more discussion, any call of question, all in favor? Carried. Item B, um, looking for a motion on this one as well, Council Sols.
Your worship, I'll bring this forward. Uh, that the staff provide a follow-up to this, Mr. Hack, and this one, take, uh, and with respect to the concerns outlined in their letter dated April 5th, 2016.
Seconder on that motion, Council Brothers. Any discussion with the council, Council Sols?
Your worship, this is, uh, an issue, uh, these folks live directly across from the pump house on Airport Way, and every time RMR dumps their septic, uh, from their sewer tank, there's an order. It's, uh, it's to be a bit troublesome for the neighborhood. So it's dealing with that, they would like us to find a better way, and, uh, so we do that, back to staff. I would also like to, uh, ask a question, uh, while he's here.
Mr. Thomas?
Uh, Mr. Thomas, just, we discussed this, uh, in the committee meeting, and it's going to be a follow-up with, uh, with the gentleman from the Skeet Hill. Um, did that follow-up period take place? And, and what a good question.
Your worship, but we have, um, while I was away, Darren has met with, uh, RMR and had a discussion with the regional district, um, with the septic facility that the regional district operates, um, and, uh, is working with RMR on, on solution. The, uh, the residents, uh, during, during the last month have had regular communication with, uh, Darren, but, um, obviously, the actual situation hasn't changed. We're still working towards the situation, so I have an understanding of frustration.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, I think that letter really didn't help, it's us, they did it. Counsel Orlando?
Uh, Your worship, I guess a question of staff. Um, if, uh, as the motion states, that staff will follow up, um, with these individuals about their concerns, is this something that council would also refund? To see, so that we're aware of whatever the issue is resolved.
Staff, can we work out to council?
Your worship, this is something that we've had discussions at the committee level on, and, um, it would definitely be something that we'll continue to discuss at committee until it's resolved. Uh, suggest that's probably the simplest unless we're actually asking councils to, um, you know, to, to make a specific decision on something, um.
Sure.
That's good. I'm going to call a question, all in favor, carried. And the item C, um, this is the Redstone District Health Foundation letter. They're looking for someone to attend the meeting, and whether it's the mayor himself might look to attend that meeting. I'm volunteering, because I'm going to be out of town. But we do have time to follow up on this slate. Okay. So just for information, anybody got any questions or comments? Just really good to see the committee is struck around the helipad for the hospital. It's been a long time in the works, and there's a lot of work to do ahead, but it's a good one. Communications, um, item A, McKenna's letter, Thomas Brook. I'll be following up on that to Regional District, Tom Durst. That item I can certainly see his concerns on now. Homia River Bridge writing letter from Mr. Shuttleworth, Counsel Orlando?
Um, just a comment, Your worship, uh, as this, uh, item is under investigation or research, the staff are researching this, will have, probably have a decision point in the future, and I think Mr. Shuttleworth for his letter, and I'm sure will be considering all of these tests by the public.
Business license monthly report. Parks and Rec and Culture Mothfin reports. Any increase in number of applications, Mr. Natto, since we passed the reservation last time to include the volunteer fireman, the RCP, and council?
Uh, yes, we've had a couple applicants for major organization coming up, applications.
Awesome. Enhancement committee minutes from November 3rd. November 3rd, so a long time ago.
Your worship, uh, just on that, uh, the, uh, they asked us to deal workers in plaza washrooms, and I believe that staff are actually, you know, working on those washrooms in the last couple of days to increase the capacity that we want the facility to.
News item. Youth Advisory Committee Minutes from January 20th. Environmental Advisory Committee Minutes from January 21st. Redstone Community Housing Society Minutes from March 7th. Parks, Rec, and Culture, March 9th. And Development Services Minutes from March 10th. Carrying that down, but is there any questions from the press? Mr. Rooney, welcome.
Well, thank you, Your Worship. Um, I have one question as with regards to the complaint from Mr. Hack and Ms. Van Dyke with regard to dumping at the pump house. Uh, I note in that letter that they say that they complained ten times, uh, regarding this, uh, this problem. Uh, was that, were those complaints made to the city or to RMR, do we know? And if they were made to the city, how come somebody could complain ten times before we see any kind of action happening?
Mr. Thomas?
Your worship, that's a simple thing to answer. The complaints were addressed to the city. They were on the City Click Fix, uh, city, uh, uh, this? App, um, and every time RMR dumped, they put in a complaint. Uh, with a very close complaint, the city addressed, uh, their concerns and started an investigation into, uh, ways that we could remedy the situation. But, uh, with the busyness of Skeet Hill, um, a truck is dumping three to four times a week in the season, so, uh, it, it seems like every time they were home and the, and the truck was dumping, uh, we would get a complaint from them. From my perspective, it was justified. It was, uh, it was very, very offensive voted down there at times, given the weather, weather, weather conditions.
Thank you, Your Worship. Well, so for the second question with regards to that, um, is it, is it simply a question of the existing system being inadequate for RMR's purposes, dumping purposes? I mean, they're unable, are they unable to use the, the existing sewer system?
Mr. Thomas?
Uh, Your Worship, the sewer question is coming from, uh, the Mid Mountain Lodge and above. It is not connected to, uh, the city's sewer system. So, um, geographically, the end of, the farthest end of the, uh, system in that direction is at the end of Monishia Estates, and from there to the Mid Mountain Lodge is, uh, I'm guessing at least another five hundred plus meters up the hill. Which, if, an option for them would be definitely to extend that sewer line, um, but that would come at great expense, be a very expensive project to install a sewer line, uh, for that purpose.
Uh, a, a, a third question, if I may, Your Worship. Are, do we charge them for the, uh, do we charge them a fee for, for doing this dumping at the pump house?
Yes, in accordance with the fees and charges filed.
How much, how much is that, do you know, Mr. Thomas?
I don't have that.
Okay.
Lots.
Lots?
Mm-hmm. But it's more expensive for them to take it across town. So that's the option that staff are working on.
To take it across town?
To the septic dumping field.
Take it across the bridge, in other words.
To the Sanida.
Sanida.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Sorry to
Sanida.
To the landfill.
To the ironfield.
Okay, thank you very much.
Emily?
I'm fine.
Alex?
Um, yeah, I was going to ask about the dumping, where, where the, like, alternate spots for them to dump would be?
The landfill.
Just the landfill.
Where you would take a septic.
Yeah, okay.
Good. All right, I put a motion to adjourn, if you have a chance to attend the